You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 19th, 2023 special meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Okay, welcome to the special town council meeting of October 19th. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as far as opening remarks, just want to, there's an addition to the agenda. Public safety building downspouts will be the last item under new business. And then we're going to flip flop the first two items under unfinished business so that the folks from the engineering firms can go home and see their families. So first agenda item is review of the, yes.
Could we please have the roll call?
Oh.
All of Southers who've been here for the roll call.
Okay, roll call. Mary Lou.
Here.
I'm here. John Wall.
I'm here.
John Coker.
Here.
And Mike Johnstone.
Not here.
Okay. Okay, so first item is review of the Lake Shore Drive Stop 17 and 18 Stormwater Improvement Project, and we'll have public comments at the end of this section.
I think we'll let him ask questions too.
Yeah, and then ask questions during the presentation.
It's more of a workshop.
Yeah, that's right. So I guess you want to introduce?
Yeah, so unless Mark has anything, essentially what we're going to try to do tonight, Sam is here from Hassan Associates, who's our engineer that's been working on this project for multiple years, and he's got a little dog and pony show for us to kind of give an outline of the project, and then after that, we can have questions and have discussion.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sam Ozey, Hassan Associate, and the project engineer on this project. So we were approached by the town to design a drainage improvement that would serve Stop 17 and 18 and the environment. Because of the drainage condition, which is poor right now, prolonged pounding during storm events, and we have some pictures that we actually acquired when we went out there during a storm event, and we have structures there already that are undersized and wouldn't be capable of handling the current flow. So in response to that, we have designed a system that we think should handle the drainage there between Stop 17 and 19 effectively. And this slide shows the drainage area of, that means, the drainage area means that every rain event that happens, everything around the enclosed area drains towards Stop 17 and 18. So, and in order to drain the runoff from that area, we've designed a system to convey the drainage from, it starts from Stop 19, it should drains to Stop 18, and from Stop 17, we've designed the structures and the pipe to convey the flow towards Stop 18. Then we have an outlet area that has been designed to optimally discharge towards the lake. And we have an outlet at Stop 18 at the moment, which is a 10-inch pipe, but it is not sufficient to handle the flow in the area, so we've optimized our design, and we are proposing an 18-inch pipe and series of structures that would safely discharge this runoff without erosion or causing any harm to the neighborhood. And every structure and pipe that has been proposed is within the public right-of-way or in the town property. So running through you through the design, oh, this is, these are pictures that were captured during a storm event and pounding along the roadside, and I personally witnessed runoff going through, going down someone's drive, and I don't have the video here, but this is the proposed design. From Stop 17, we have structures towards the north side and the south side of Lake Shore Drive that takes every runoff and takes it to Stop 18, and we have a drywall system that would infiltrate, take as much infiltration as possible before taking it down towards the lake, and we've positioned the drywall systems in such a way that it dissipates the velocity of the water. The velocity of the water is a function of the slope of the pipe, so we've made it in such a way that the water flows into a drywall and fills up the drywall before it discharges at a gentle slope towards an improved discharge outlet location with riprap revertment. So taking a closer look at the outfall, so this is what we have, the pipe that is lighter, the lighter grade pipe is the existing outfall right now, and the one underneath is the proposed outfall. We've made it in such a way that it has a gentle slope, and it discharges towards the lake. Another thing to note in this design is that we've attempted, and we've actually, we've positioned the outfall beyond every adjacent properties so that there won't be, by any means, be encroachment of water into adjacent properties. So these are the pictures of the outfall area, so this is, we are going to be discharging somewhere around here, which is beyond the adjacent properties, adjacent buildings, and we think that this design is safe, and we have designed it in such a way that we are not also impacting on the boardwalk that is close to the discharge location. And I am very much available for any questions and discussions about the design.
Is there an example someplace else that we could see how this works, that you've designed before that's something like this?
In the area?
What, yeah, yes. Just because it impacts the people at 18 now, doesn't it? And it will be a large pool of water?
Do you have any areas specifically in the design? Are you talking about the streets or the?
Where the water, where the water discharges at the very end?
I, to my knowledge, there are many discharge, right now, there's a discharge location there at 18.
Right.
We have a discharge location. It's going to be something like that, but even better.
Well, Sam, what about possible erosion on the beach at 18?
The possibility of erosion is a function of velocity of water, and the velocity of water is a function of the slope of the pipe.
Right.
So right now, what we have as the slope of the pipe is, let me go back and show The existing outfall has a slope of 6.71.
Right.
For a 10-inch pipe. The proposed outfall has a slope of 0.5%, which is even a lot lower than what we have right now. So how it works is it's just like pouring water from, from the top. If it's sloped, it has lesser impact towards where it lands. So we've tried to make it in such a way that it goes towards the outfall as gentle as possible. By so doing, even if you have more drainage going towards the outfall, it doesn't impact the outfall because we have sand, and we know that it, there's going to be infiltration, and everything is going towards the lake. So that's what we've done in our design.
So, so the part that's at Stop 16, Mr. Rispie's, is it 17? What's going to happen with that, will you get rid of those drains that go down his property?
We couldn't, when we started the design, we couldn't ascertain many information, many things about the drain, so we are going to block that pipe that goes towards Stop 17, and every flow is going to be directed towards Stop 18.
Okay.
And will there be gravel at the outflow or not?
We are going to have riprap. It's larger than gravel, and it's, we have ripraps because they have, they can dissipate velocity better than gravel because of the nature, it's boulder, it's bigger.
And that outflow, as far as how it relates to the boardwalk going down there now, will that outflow be north or south of the end of the boardwalk?
It will be south of the end of the boardwalk.
Okay.
Just the way it is right now, but we will make it even bigger.
Okay.
So that it is not concentrated towards one region, and we do have wider surface area for infiltration and movement towards the lake.
Okay.
How do you remediate any possible?
It's, John, it's not a?
How do you remediate any possible pollution, you know, the oils and such that comes off the roadway and salt?
Yeah.
I mean, how's that? Because it's all going to end up in the lake at some point.
Yeah, so we have this structure that is going to be installed where we have parking right now. It's, we have, we've proposed two alternates, one is a drywall. What would happen is that we have called out that the drywall will have what we call a catch basin trap. What it means is that if I have oil leakage that goes into the catch basin, into the drywall, the dry, the water in the drywall can only be discharged towards the lake when it comes up to a certain level. So with the catch basin trap, the oil stays on top, and it's trapped, and wouldn't be able to go towards the lake while the water goes from underneath the catch basin trap towards the lake. That's how we are going to stop any form of hydrocarbon going towards the lake. Then for solid particles, typically, they're, and Tom Dolph is really, really good with installing baskets. There, what's it called again, please?
The character of the inserts?
Yes.
There's one in there.
Yeah, the inserts act as a filter that filters whatever goes into the drywall. So it stops solid particles to a certain diameter that would cause pollution from going into the drywall. Alternatively, we also proposed a swirl concentrator, what we call a cascade separator. So the cascade separator, what it does is that it's, it concentrates solid particles by creating a vortex when the water goes into the structure. So when the vortex is created, it concentrates the solid particles that sinks down to the structure. So both solutions would work effectively, and that's how we are going to stop pollution from getting into the lake.
How often would you have to clean out the, on the first alternative there?
That would determine, you know?
How?
Yeah, maybe rain events, and the town, it has been great with maintenance, so yeah, I think it's going to be checked regularly, maybe quarterly or during the rainy season. I actually don't have answer to that question.
Tim, I'll take that question. This is John Wall. So we cambered the line down there on Rizzi's property. It's, it's an old line, it's actually manufactured, or not manufactured, but there are numerous types and diameters of pipe that were included in that line. We don't know when it was put in essentially, but it's got different diameters and different types of materials, which it would be at risk of potentially, you know, having a break in the line, which would cause flooding in that area. So it's, it's not that it isn't functioning currently, it's just that it's a dangerous situation in that it, you never know when those disparate pipe joints and those kinds of things would fail. So it's, it's kind of a dangerous long-term solution for what's out there now. If that answers your question, it's not a question of being clogged, it's just, it's just not a viable line for the, for the long term.
Okay, there are a couple of questions, but forgive me. What percentage increase in water should we expect at 18 versus what is going on now
I can give you the answer to that question later, not at the moment, but the percentage of the water that will be discharged is not as important as how it is going to be discharged. Because if it, if it has a high slope, yeah, that is a problem, it causes erosion, but even if you have so much water, the lake is before us, it's going to the lake, and if you discharge it in such a way that it doesn't cause any harm with a gentle slope with lesser velocity than it would have discharged or is discharging right now, no matter the amount of water that comes into the system, it, everywhere it's going to be safe. But I can actually work towards getting you those numbers.
Okay, thank you. What are your thoughts of this?
He has a question, so we'll answer the showering and questions like everyone else. Or two people.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Perry. Go ahead, Mr. Perry.
Yes, will any part, any parts of the system be exposed?
Exposed to, on top?
Will you, will you get pipe running across the ground or will everything be buried in the nasty pipes?
Everything will be buried. The only exposed portion is towards the outfall, and the structures that you see, the installed structures where the stone is going to be collected.
All right, Sam, so last question, there's two outflows, it looks like there's a pooling area about halfway down, and then the outflow of a dead bomb of old four block, is that correct? This half a, will the pooling area be where you see it's halfway down, and will there be standing water when there's the pooling area?
The half, the portion that is halfway down is a drywall, and the drywall serves two functions in that location. First, it's, it adds, it helps infiltration, it connects water into, into the ground. When it gets to a particular level, if there is a huge storm event, the drywall then discharges towards the outfall. The drywall in that location is going to be sealed completely, so that means that it has a solid leak, and why we've made it such as such is because we don't want it to be, because of the sand, we don't want it to be inundated with sand over time, so we want everything to be clean. And just close to the drywall, we have proposed what we've called a drainage pad. The drainage pad is just located, I don't know if you can see my, my mouse, the drainage pad goes towards the outfall as well. The drainage pad serves two purposes. The first purpose is to, at every point, show us the elevation of the top of the drywall because we know that over time, sand gets towards, you know, the south side, and maybe you can have a hip hop sound after the winter season. So cleaning out, we will know where we started from. Secondly, the drainage pad would also drain the area around Stop 18, draining it towards the, towards the outfall area. So that is how that, the, that drywall has been designed. It's, it is one of the very key structures in this project because it's dissipating that velocity and making the outfall to be safe and the runoff flowing gently towards the outfall.
Sam?
Thank you very much for your previous efficient answers.
Sam, a couple of questions for you. At some of our previous meetings, we discussed the current system, do we have any drywells in our current infrastructure that's on Lake Shore Drive in the area that we're discussing?
In the area?
No, attached to our current system that's out there now, there are no drywells, correct?
We have structures, but I am not certain if they are drywells. Even if they are, they are very small structures.
And we're adding additional catch basins on both sides of the roadway on Lake Shore Drive is the scope of this project, assist in capturing the, the rainwater, that's the overall goal of this project.
Correct.
Okay, and in our previous meetings, speaking with our street superintendent, Tom Dolph, one of the main scopes of this project is through Tom's 31 years experience here in the town, he has seen the water runoff from the large rains or major storms that come from 19 to the east, down to 16 to the west, and the overall goal is the town needs to repave, resurface the asphalt on Lake Shore Drive, and before we do that, we want to address the stormwater concerns all along Lake Shore Drive with the ultimate goal that once the stormwater issues have been resolved, the pooling of water has been resolved on Lake Shore Drive, then we can move forward with repaving Lake Shore Drive without any interruption to the new surface in years to come.
Yeah, correct, and it's, it's always good to do the drainage first because you don't want to tear out the road when you are done paving it. So doing the drainage first gives you the opportunity to put everything the way you want it to be before paving, and I have witnessed firsthand the runoff coming from 19 towards 18 and the situation around there during the storm event, yes.
And as we move east in the town on Lake Shore Drive, we understand also that we have additional stormwater concerns that we have to address in other areas on Lake Shore Drive, as far as like Stop 29, there's some concerns as well, and in some of the surrounding neighborhoods there, that'll be in future projects.
Yeah.
As we move forward. So this project is just one of several that will be proposed in the town to address the stormwater fallout in years to come. So I just wanted to share some of the information from some of our previous meetings that we've had with Hassan Associates, that this project is a part of many other projects to come in the town to address some of the, you know, water runoff concerns that we have on the roadways. And the problem is larger than just the one line at Stop 17. Everything on the south side of Lake Shore Drive ponds heavily, and a lot of the flow on the south side of Lake Shore Drive will be captured by this system that leaves all the puddles down in between 17 and 18, and then as Mark suggested and Sam said, everything from 19 is coming down that slope with significant velocity that will be capturing with these structures when it gets to 18 before it winds up trying to go down the existing flume and existing pipe. So we're able to slow that velocity with this system on both sides, meaning 19 and 17. In addition, everything that comes down Ridgemore at 18 will be into this system now instead of just free flowing over the top and winding up flying down that 6% pipe that's existing. So not only will it reduce the flow based on the velocity, but it will also capture all those flooded areas, you know, beyond 17.
I think Sam too, if you could share, and this came up at one of the meetings before, is the amount of acreage that is in that Ridgemore area between 17, 18, the amount of acreage that is to the south of Lake Shore Drive that actually contributes to the rainfall that comes down onto Lake Shore Drive?
Yeah, this is the drainage area, we have about 7.71 acres draining towards 17 and 18.
Due to the elevation of that land, that water that's received from a rainfall now travels through that acreage to Lake Shore Drive and then begins to puddle, causing concerns on Lake Shore Drive.
Correct.
On the, on the discharge at 18, do we need any type of a IDAM permit or for discharging into the lake? Is that going to be an issue or a question, or do we have to be worried about that?
To our knowledge right now, it is not up to one acre of disturbance. Our design, whenever it goes beyond a particular area, that's when you, you need all the permits. So considering what we've designed and the area of disturbance in the construction, to my knowledge right now, we don't.
Don't need a permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions from up here?
Dr. May, while we have Sam at the podium, if I may make a recommendation, maybe it's something appropriate while he's aware of the anticipated cost that was initially given to the town, and maybe we ask Sam some of the questions relative to what the cost of the project was anticipated at prior to bidding and where we're at with the bidding now, because I think it's important to share with the community, the cost was anticipated originally to be as high as, I believe it was $822,000 for some of the initial estimates that we had, and we're very pleased to see that the bidding from the two contractors came in much less than that. And Sam, maybe if you could just kind of explain some of what you anticipated and then where the bids came in at for the council, just to share that.
Okay, just after COVID.
I've got that.
There was.
Oh, yeah, okay, wonderful.
So it was very uncertain what you get when you, when you send out projects for bids because the prices were just going up and down, so there were lots of uncertainties. So initially, we, we had, we had, we had an OPC, that's Opinion of Probably, Probably Cost, which is what we call the cost estimate for the project to be 566,000. Then when you add the level of uncertainty, it goes up with uncertainties, but then when we got the bid, and this 576,000 is for the base bid and the two alternates, but just for the base bid and alternate one, we had 434,000 then. Looking at the bids that we got, Woodruff and Sons for the base bid is, base bid plus alternate one is 346,671.76, while H and G came in at 318,288.03. Then for the base bid and all the alternates, Woodruff came in at 445,295.64, while H and G came in at 478,538.03. So either way, it came in less, lesser when compared with the engineer's estimate, which is a good thing. when compared with the engineer's estimate, which is a good thing.
Sam, I saw on page seven, there's an amendment that talks about probable cost, there's an overrun potential, and the attachment B, it allows for injuries in those numbers, it's in fact that engineers say they have more work on their exit. Is that included in the numbers you just quoted?
So page seven of, sorry, I didn't get the question very well.
Oh, we heard, yeah, page seven, your original bid, there was an amendment in 45% overrun potential.
Sorry, sir, are you referring to the, our cost estimate or the bids?
Yeah, the attachment B, there's not, there's not some attachment B.
Sam, was that when the bids went out for actual bidding purposes maybe?
I think.
Sorry.
The B, I can't find that. What I saw was attachment B on the seventh page, which had cost overruns as high as 40%.
Okay, okay, I know what you're, that, that was during the design phase when we were putting together the cost estimate. And the bids have been coming crazy lately, but I think things are normalizing. So we will have to disregard those now because we've gone beyond the estimate phase. We now have bids and so those, we, we, we don't anticipate any 40% increase in price, construction cost.
Okay, any, anyone else think that apart where it spent a lot of time in 20 beautiful, bust out with beach grass and sand and so forth, there's a lot, there's a volunteer planting the beach grass. How destructive would this project be to that work that was already done in the bus stop? And does the cost you quoted included amount to put it back to the way it looks currently?
Our design has also incorporated restoration and planting dune grass when the construction is completed. So they, it's part of the cost of the project.
Sam, as we refer to the bids, we also are under a time restraint on the bids as well. They'll hold the bids for a period of 60 days, correct, from the time that we receive them?
Yes, that's from the 25th of September.
Okay. So essentially what that means for us is if we want to exercise our right to award the bids as a town, we need to do it within that 60 day period. Otherwise, it's open for renegotiation with the contractors that are low. Yeah. Ideally, if we decide we want to go ahead with this, we would do it, you know, we would award the bids at the November town council meeting and then, you know, proceed with the project or negotiate with the, with the low bidder for the project at that point.
All right, any other questions from anybody on Zoom? Any questions from anybody here in attendance? You might want to come up and talk into the microphones.
Thanks for doing this today, we really appreciate it. First comment, just, I don't know if there's some way you can bring the public along better on projects like this. I know we're, we should be watching the, the agendas and things like that, but it also seems like there should be some sort of announcement. So for what that's worth, that's just how we feel right now. We do appreciate everything you're doing and how responsive you've been, so thank you for that. My understanding is there will be a new pipe that goes under the, the deck, is that correct?
I just, it's not.
Right next to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
You guys can kind of do it with the air.
Yeah.
Here, Sam, you can take this one.
So the pipe, there'll be a pipe adjacent to the, the deck?
Yes.
Okay. And the existing pipe will stay?
The existing pipe right now, wait, sorry. The existing pipe right now is going to be, be as is because we don't want to disrupt the deck by trying to pull it out. Then we, we will have to plug it at the south end of it. That is, um, very close to the beginning of the deck, but we are not going to rip the pipe out.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And so the parking spaces on top, will that come out or some portion of that come out?
During construction, it's going to be disrupted, but when it's done, it's just going to be as is right now.
And what's kind of the timeline if, you know, the board approves this within the period? Do you have any sense of when this will take place? I know some of that's speculative and availability of contractors and things.
The contract has been structured in such a way that once the contractor is mobilizes to the site, he has, if I remember correctly, I, I have to check my books, he has between 60 and 90 days to complete everything. So, um, and that is before Memorial Day.
Okay, so the, the goal is to get it done before Memorial Day?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At the end, where it comes to the beach right now, there's a channel that's formed and that channel, what do you think is 10 feet wide maybe? Do you anticipate, what's the width of that channel at the end going to be when you're completed?
The channel at the end would must have been due to the drainage. It just is a natural channel that because of the flow over time, it's widening and it's like the water flows through there. It is not going to get any wider than it is right now because the velocity at the discharge is even lower than what it is at the moment.
Okay.
Can you have the, your.
Gary and Susan Ball in 1806 Ridgemore Drive? Thank you, I'm sorry. More stone, more riprap underneath, is what I heard?
Yes.
Okay. And so the way this, I apologize, so this is the new pipe? And then it'll fall there, is that what this is happening there?
Yes, it flows into this structure. So it retains, it has a sump that retains an amount of water before it then flows into this pipe and goes into this dry well that also retains a certain amount of water. This dry well has, is going to encourage infiltration of water into the ground. But when it's, when you have enough rainwater that it comes up, the water is going to flow through this pipe towards the discharge. So because this pipe is gently sloped, the velocity at the discharge is going to be a lot less than what we have now. This is what is there right now. So because this is gentle, you will not, that channel is not going to get any wider although we have a, a larger pipe, but it's not going to affect much at the outfall.
And so this, the sump, what is that? Is that, will it be a mechanical?
The sump is just, when you have a structure and the pipe, the outfall pipe is, is not at the bottom. It's elevated in such a way that the structure can retain certain amount of water. That space between the invert of the pipe and the bottom of the structure is called the sump.
Okay, okay.
So just so you understand the difference between a dry well and a catch basin, a dry well has an open bottom similar to what you have in a septic system sometimes, the old dry well, the old septic tanks, I'm sorry, the old dry well. So that bottom then can infiltrate water into it and a lot of the structures that we've, that he's designed here will do that before it even gets to 18. So there's some dissipation of that surface water before it even gets down the pipe toward 18. That's part of the design.
And so then all those, that puddle at the bottom of Ridgemore will go away?
Yes. Yes, as well as the puddles going back towards 16 on the south side of the drive.
Okay, good. I'll probably have to explain this to the people on the beach, so it's, uh, thank you very much. We really liked the improvements that were done, that deck going out is fantastic, so thank you for everything you're doing.
Great, thanks Gary. All right, anybody else here want to make any comments?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Steve Haye. I'm a local attorney, offices in Michigan City. As, as I think some of you know, I have in the past and I do continue currently represent Mr. and Mrs. Rizvi. Unfortunately, Zafar and Terry couldn't be here this, this evening. And they asked me to come and address you very briefly. As you know, their property will be affected by this project very significantly. And, and I, as well as Rizvi's, have been talking about this with some of you and the city official or town officials for some time. The Rizvies asked me to let you know that they are extremely and wholeheartedly in favor of this project and they want to congratulate you for addressing it. They're very thankful that it would appear that it's going to be accomplished in the near future. And, and they want to give you a pat on the back and say thank you very much. And so that's all I have to say. Thank you, gentlemen and lady.
Great, any other comments here or questions?
Do you anticipate accepting bids or do you anticipate, uh, accepting the, um, all parts of the bid, I guess, the alternates?
I think, I think the anticipation is that, yeah, it sounds like it's, it's a plan that just part of it isn't going to work. We're really going to need to incorporate them all if we want to do this and not cause erosion at Stop 18. So yeah, I would anticipate that.
Okay, thank you.
So the decision will involve whether to go ahead with the project in general? And then the decision as to which alternates to award is, is based on financial affordability? And maybe it's time to address that now. So again, Sam mentioned that we were like 20% under engineer's estimate, which is phenomenal in, in the current business environment. As most of you know, the supply chain issues based on COVID and, and some of the other issues that introduced all the uncertainty that made the engineer's estimates be as wildly disparate as they were when we started this project. Now we've gotten some hard bids in. So there's three numbers that we're considering. One is the base bid and that would only accommodate a, a small portion of the project. The second alternate includes everything going on the south side and all the other structures that we wanted to include. The third number is for this, what the swirl structure, which addresses John's question. To give a little context, what we're trying to do with the stormwater fund in general, as we look forward in this town, is to reduce our impact on the environment and control storm flow. What we hope to do with this project, if we were awarded it with the swirl structure, is to prove to grant agencies that we are being proactive with our own funds and doing as much as possible. So the swirl structure is an enhancement of the project. It wouldn't necessarily be required, but it shows our good faith, I believe. And it also further ensures that we don't introduce the hydrocarbons and the fines and some of the stuff that comes off the road into the, into our drinking water. So I think if you have questions relative to affordability, I, I apologize, I sent it to you guys today. It was a little bit hastily put together. I got some information from Trista earlier today and forwarded it to you guys. Essentially, what she's informed us of is that the stormwater fund, based on what's going to be available at the end of the year and what will come in in the ensuing months, would, would allow us to afford the awarding of the entire project, which is roughly 450, $445,000. I would, you know, love to see us, I mean, I, we're opening for, you know, more questions from, obviously from the board or the public, but I would like to see us proceed. So that hold period that we talked about, the 60 day hold period, means that if we were able to award the project by the November town council meeting, we would be within that hold period, which means we would not have to allow for renegotiation on numbers of potentially rebid the project, which might incur additional costs, you just never know. That structure is fairly significant every, every week. You don't know what's going to happen with material prices, I think that's fair to say. So I don't know how you want to proceed, if you want to, need a motion or anything or have some more discussion?
I guess let's, anybody on, anybody up here have anything else they want to say?
I think we should talk about it at the November meeting. So people have a chance to watch this and then give us feedback.
Anybody on?
And there'll be five of us then.
Anybody on Zoom have any comments? Anybody here have any other comments?
Anita Remages, 2300, Boramont. First of all, I appreciate your sentiments as well. Thank you, this has been a long, 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 long project. And the fact that you're this close, congratulations. And people have known about this project for years and years and years. And I think that putting it off just because, I mean, you have four members, it's four fifths. We have the money. They don't understand what, what part of the public do we need to let know anymore? Since this project has been going on since 2009? I just, the money is here. Trista seems to have a good handle on the clerk treasurer's office and the funds that are available. So it seems to me that as one of the public, that some of you would listen to, I would appreciate that you would make a motion and try and move forward with this. Thank you.
Chris, is this motion going to need, if, if we decide to proceed tonight, is this going to need a first and second reading?
No.
No.
Just you awarding the contract.
You so choose, so it just takes the majority of your counsel.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion?
Well, I want.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I just want to double check, how much money do we have in the fund right now?
That's, if you got that email, John, I'd have to pull it up. Do you have that number, that, yeah, here we go.
Yeah, I don't think I got the email, my computer's on the.
Oh, that's okay, we can get you a copy. Maybe Deanna can make you a copy so you get it, but. End of September cash balance in the stormwater fund is 260,578. Revenues through 9/29 will be another 168,970,000. Expenditures through 9/29 would be 82,205, leaving a balance at the end of 9/29/23 of 347,343 dollars. She expects the revenue yet this year to the end of the year is 34,000, which puts us at 381,000 projected end of year balance. If you scroll down a little farther, she says that the planned capital expenditure that she's got in the 2024 budget is 70,000. And she also expects unbudgeted revenue in 2024 in total of approximately 203,000. But if she takes that $65,000 number that you see there, John, and adds it on to those other balances, you're at about 560,000, I'm sorry, 516,000 of, of available funds for the project. She makes a comment, which is, which is cogent, that this, this will deplete that fund at that point. But that, you know, that'll continue, as, as you know, we generate about 202.
Now, on the other project we're doing with the water lines and such, where's that money coming from?
Water department.
The water department has funds for that project too, right?
That's that 700 and something thousand.
That's coming out of the water, water department reserve funds.
I just want to make sure we have enough money to pay all this, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the case here. That's why we, Trista was kind enough to do this analysis for us.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we award the bids.
To Woodruff?
Well, I, the funny part of this, these bids are if we choose to award the whole project, Woodruff is low. If we choose to only award the base bid and the first alternate, then H and G is low. They're both legitimate contractors with good reputations. Personally, I'm making a, my motion would be that we award the 445,000, which includes the swirl structure that improves the.
Okay.
And Sam, how, how much would it screw up this project or potentially screw up this project to use two different contractors to, to try and take advantage of?
Oh, you cannot.
You can't do it.
You cannot.
No, and, and just to be clear, the Haas has made a recommendation based on each of those, found that each of the bidders are competent and lowest for the different options that were provided. So you're in good standing to consider each of those. So your motion is well taken if there's a second.
Your motion is to award the bids for 445,000, then decide on who's going to do it. Is that?
You don't decide, I mean, you either pick.
I'll second it if that's what your motion is.
But, but let's be clear, right? I mean, that's the, that's the entire project together without the separate, yes, so that.
No, no, that includes this, that, the 445,000.
I, no, we're saying the same thing, let me finish. The, the, there was one bidder who has partial bids with an option, those are separate. And there's one bidder who has the entire project for the amount that you.
There's two bids for the entire project?
I understand that.
Yeah.
There's two different bidders. Your amount encompasses the entire project, which is only one of the bidders, one of the contractors.
Correct, the other bidder's number for the whole project would be higher than 445,000.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hall of favor, we, no, no, we don't need a roll call vote. Hall of favor, say aye?
Aye, aye. Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, good deal. Sam, you can go home, see your family.
Thanks so much. And if you have anybody else that has questions, you know, feel free to get ahold of either myself or Haas, or, I mean, essentially, we can field the questions for you, or even Marcus as well.
Okay, next on the agenda is the building commission report at the last Town Council meeting. I didn't have the minutes to report on that. We had a meeting September 8th. On that meeting, we had many incomplete permit applications, most of which needed to be tabled. Hopefully, when we have the computerized permit system, that problem will go away. And basically, nothing else got accomplished really at that meeting except for a few simple permits. On October the 13th, we had a meeting. There's some discussion of the survey of the beach stairs that we think are not in compliance with the ordinances. Survey's going to happen of those, but right now, our building inspector is on administrative leave, and we'll have to wait till he gets back to get that done. 1612 Indianapolis, a variance was granted. The owners need to submit proper applications and documentation, so they need to submit a new application, basically. Captain's Walk property, there also a variance was granted, and basically, that permit, I think they need to submit something about their lighting, but otherwise, that should not be a problem, and hopefully will be granted without any problems.
Just to clarify on that, no variance was granted, their permit was granted.
They got a permit to proceed.
Okay, did give the permit.
No variance, yeah, the permit. No, they were denied their high variance.
That was the APC, you're right. The APC basically said that their plan did not, was not a problem in terms of our comprehensive plan, that's basically what. 1514 Lakeshore Drive, plan review was requested. They want to put a garage on a separate lot. They also want to increase volume in the setback. No permit is granted as yet, and it was suggested they go to the BZA. The owner had some issues with that and will remain to see, remains to be seen what will happen. And 2020, I'm not sure, I can't read my writing, 2020 something, Hovland, there was a fence built and perhaps built on the neighbor's property, some of the driveway built on neighbor's property. It appears that it was done without a permit, but research is going to be done to see if that had happened, and indeed, if it did, fines will be assessed. But really, the issue is between neighbors. The neighbor who had the driveway and fence built on their property is going to need to decide what they want to do with civil litigation. The town really doesn't get involved in that, although, again, if it was done without a permit, we will be assessing fines. MS4 ordinance, we've all had a chance to look at that. It's the thing that's like 70 pages long. It was done for Elkhart. I think we need to pass that or at least pass it on first reading, right?
No, it's, you guys have the bones of that ordinance. It's going to be considered at the November one.
Okay, so we'll have that.
Yeah, it just needs to be done before next year.
Okay, all right, so we'll table that for now, November meeting. An ordinance 2023 about restating Title IX of the town code, charges for garbage refuse removal and leaf pickup. That we have not done a first reading on.
Not, and it was asked that it continued at last meeting for further consideration, so.
Can we take that up tonight, or does that?
You can take it up. Any ordinances that haven't been done on first, at least first reading cannot be done unless you have unanimous vote of the council, so you could consider it.
No, but we could do first reading, right?
Yes, you could.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve that on first reading. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. Short of discussion, I'll make a motion now, or I guess we call the question. Hall of favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mary Lou, did you vote?
No.
You abstained?
Yes, I abstained.
Okay, so it passed three to one, is that correct? John, you voted aye?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Next issue, ordinance regarding authorization, execution, delivery of master equipment. This is the fire truck, right?
Correct.
And this, again, has to be passed on two separate readings, right? So, I'll make a motion to approve that on first reading. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. Hall of favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, is that right? Larry Wall, building commissioner, job classification. I understand some negotiations have taken place, although I think Mike Johnstone was involved in that.
He is, and so we've had some progress, and between Larry and Mr. Johnstone will be able to present a contract with Mr. Wallstein as a contractor versus an employee. So, that will be the nature of what gets presented to you for the November meeting.
November.
But there is an agreement between Mr. Johnstone as the liaison from the council and Larry as to the material terms, and then that'll get presented to you for approval at November meeting.
Great, okay. Second reading of the salary ordinance, could pass that on first reading at the last meeting? I'll make the motion to pass it on second reading?
There were a couple, the chief and I talked, there were a couple corrections. One was a job title.
Yeah.
And the other one was that they're only the BZA secretary, not the APC.
Right, so.
So, that other than that, everything else is the same.
Yeah, on second reading with the aforementioned amendments. So, I make the motion to pass that on second reading. Is there a second?
I second it.
Discussion. Hall of favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Aye.
I thought it hurt.
I'm just playing to see if you're paying attention.
I see here something about year-to-date totals paid out to Cender and Company. I think we beat that to death at the last meeting, and I don't intend to go there unless somebody thinks we should.
Not me.
Not me.
Next issue was we did not approve the payouts to Barnes and Thornburg because we wanted a monthly and year-to-date total. $5,000 was budgeted. Looks like we've got invoices totaling $6,993.
66.
I'm sorry, 66, I'm.
It's okay.
I'm seeing double. We need to go home. I'd make a motion that we approve the $5,000 that is in the budget. I think the remainder of that is not the responsibility of the town, so I'd make a motion, we approve $5,000 and make a point that the amount of money approved for the clerk treasurer's legal expenses, for whatever reason he's obtaining them, so any amount above $5,000, I would recommend we not approve. So, that's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Let's say, Mr. Attorney, what is the requirement here? We have to pay it, or?
The issue is whether the town is ultimately responsible, that's a different question, and whether you might have to make an appropriation or find that money. I think it's at least appropriate to pay the 5,000 because that's there, determined on a different day where we are and the basis of these charges. So, to say it's not the town's responsibility by virtue of the clerk's office racking those fees up, there's some responsibility there. I don't know what the nature of the agreement, I haven't been involved, but I think that you're on solid ground to at least approve what's been appropriated, and we can address the remaining withhold. Those are certainly within your purview because there isn't authorization under those.
Well, I might also add that we are overbunching for the town attorney as well, and that should be addressed at the same time before talking about attorney fees.
There's a motion and a second. Hall of favor, say aye.
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 All right, unanimous.
But we will look at the difference on a different day, right? That's what he suggested?
I'm happy to look at it. I guess, I guess my thought would be that if I want, if I'm going to approve any amount greater than the $5,000, I would like an itemized statement as to what advice was obtained concerning what issues, because I'm not quite sure why the clerks would need legal advice. As far as I know, no suits have been filed against the clerk treasurer, at least not regarding clerk treasurer business. So, I guess before we go into that meeting, I would certainly want to know what we needed more than $5,000. In fact, I'd like to know what we needed $5,000 worth of legal assistance for. But at this point, we've approved $5,000. Water tower erosion mitigation slash landscape beautification plan. Chief, you want to address that?
Deanna has one. Oh, I'm sorry. So, the claim's approvals on those three checks from September or last month, is that?
We've approved $5,000 total, whichever checks, you know.
Well, some of the media ordinance, so you just approved, I think that would be important for Deanna to have a motion.
We approved $5,000 expenditure from the town, from the town clerk's legal expenses.
But let's be clear.
You also had a copy of the extra money, and that was part of your motion, and it occurred that it wasn't part of your motion. It was passed, I'm not sure.
Well, and I think it's important to have clarity too, because there's a summary of what has or hasn't, so you need to be clear that is it 5,000 total that shall be spent from the clerk's office? And to the extent there's confusion on that, we should revisit it, and if the total that you're authorizing, regardless of stage of payment, payments to date or what's been incurred to date, that you are limiting it to 5,000, subject to any additional consideration, I do think it's important, to the extent it's not clear.
So, basically, we've approved $5,000 with a decision to bring this back if the clerk so desires for further consideration at next meeting. But I guess my personal comment is I would like to know what we're paying for if we're going to be asked to pay more than $5,000.
Well, I think that violates the due diligence of the judge, you will be accounted on that.
Then I guess if that's the case, then I approve $5,000, and you will have a hard time changing my mind.
Yes, but that was actually the purpose of the affiliate kind of move.
Actually, we have to approve all expenditures, whether they're in the budget or not, I believe. Okay, so are we clear on that? Okay. Water tower erosion mitigation slash landscape beautification plan.
Good evening, everyone. Earlier today, I met with the Water Department Superintendent Greg Parish, and Greg has been working with the Town Council and making improvements on Foxdale at the primary water tower for the town. As you are aware, in the last year, you have approved a parking space near the bunker at the base of the water tower, and currently, there are masonry stairs that are being installed leading up to the water tower for both maintenance workers and/or any other vendors needing access to the water tower. Therefore, Greg would like to complete this project by proposing a mitigation plan for erosion and also a landscaping plan for the beautification of the hillside. What he's proposing is to have dune grass plugs installed throughout the area that is facing towards Foxdale. The land there would be cleaned. After removing all debris in that, we'll install the dune grass at the sum of $6,240. That's an estimate we received from old past industries, the same company that's been utilized by the town for other projects throughout the town. They have the current funds in the 2023 operating budget that would cover this expenditure. Superintendent Parish is just asking for the approval by the council to move forward with this project, also with the understanding that next year, there will be an expenditure of $1,200 spent for the weed removal and fertilization and more or less care of the plantings for one year for the sum of $1,200, and that will come out of his operating budget in 2024. And then also, there is a one-year guarantee on these plantings. If anything was not to take, they will guarantee it for one year. So, we're just seeking the approval of the council to move forward with this project.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. Hall of favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Employee PTO transfer slash donation proposal for consideration. We have an employee who, due to health issues, is going to need to take some time off of work. We have some other employees who would like to transfer their PTO time to him so that he doesn't have to go without a paycheck during that period. Basically, I think this proposal's going to need a change to the employee handbook. I would like to make a motion that we change the employee handbook to allow this transfer slash donation to take place.
Doc, if I could make a quick, I guess, addition to some information to that? I appreciate it. Earlier today, we have an employee that serves the town with over 31 years of service. He's a very dedicated employee, a very compassionate employee, who is constantly looking out for the other town employees who came to me, and that is our street department superintendent, Tom Dolph, who's with us tonight. Tom had proposed a suggestion that the Town Council consider an amendment to the current handbook related to the PTO hours that are granted to the employees on an hourly basis each year. The suggestion was currently we have an employee who is experiencing a family emergency, and in the future, we may have additional employees that may face either a family emergency or a personal emergency related to an injury and/or to an illness. What Tom is proposing is a suggestion that employees donate and/or transfer a determined amount of their PTO hours to another employee in need when the other employee's PTO bank is getting low. For an example, if an employee experiences an unfortunate illness or injury that prevents said employee from coming to work for weeks or sometimes longer, we're proposing that this, the employee that has exhausted all their PTO time, that the new amendment to the town handbook would allow employees to donate PTO hours to another employee's PTO bank with the authorization of either the town administrator and/or the Town Council. This program, I will say, from my previous career, we had done this for an employee that was suffering from cancer and unfortunately subsequently passed from cancer. The employees came together, donated a number of hours, and were able to continue having the employee receive payment while he was undergoing cancer treatment, and I would like to commend Tom for coming forward with this idea today. It was a very noble suggestion. I support the suggestion, and I would like to see the council support it as well with an additional amendment to the town handbook in the future.
So, I'll make that motion?
I second it.
Discussion. Hall of favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, public safety building downspouts. John, that's yours.
So, the public safety building, there's a change order that came through, a change order request, I should say, from Holiday Construction. There was an oversight apparently in the design phase where the downspouts on the south side of the building were originally planned to do what we planned to do on the north side of the building, which is have them come down and actually go across the surface of the hard surfaces. We're still able to accommodate that on the north side. We're going to have a swale and then the curb on the north side of the parking area and the, I'm sorry, not the parking area, but the aprons, concrete aprons on the doorways will allow us to have that surface water still drain from the downspouts on the north side of the building. What this proposal incurs or encodes is taking the downspouts on the south side of the building, rather than allowing them to drain out on the surface, they will go into the storm drain system so that we won't have any danger of stormwater getting over the top of curbs and causing tripping hazards or slippery conditions or anything like that on the entrance side or the north side of the building. I think, I think you guys all got that proposal, I think it was $11,000, $12,000.
Yeah.
If we could just have a motion not to exceed, I'll try to go back and see if I can't negotiate with them to get that number down, but if you guys are amenable to not to exceed of that amount, I'll see what I can do to try to get that hammered down a little bit. Mark made the suggestion earlier, maybe we could get him to take the management fee off of it or something, but I'll even try to get some more money if I can out of it. But I'd like to, it's time sensitive only because, as you see, we've got all the underground in now. We're proceeding with the paving, which we're trying to get done so that we don't have to go through the winter with stone. We're trying to get the asphalt paving in, so they're doing the concrete curbs and walks right now. We'd like to get the asphalt in before the asphalt plants close, which generally happens late October, early November, so we're kind of under the gun to get that line down underneath to take those, take that stormwater.
So, is this part of the 3.1?
No, this would be a change order.
And so, this oversight was an oversight of the design phase, which Holiday was responsible for, is that right?
More or less, yeah. You know, as I mentioned before, we were kind of fast and furious trying to get the design in. I guess it's probably fair to say that it was an oversight in some respects. They could still drop. oversight in some respects. They could still drop the, if we told them no, we could, they could drop that water out on the, you know, on the south side, but I don't think that's a good solution. I think it was, they brought it to our attention, and I think it's the right thing to do. I'm worried about if we don't, we're going to have water, you know, freezing water kind of situation on the other side, south side, I'm sure.
This is going to drive, if we don't do it, it's going to drop water onto the asphalt.
Correct.
Which won't drain.
Yeah, which I don't think is a good move. I think it probably should have, what I'm trying to say is it probably should have been designed that way. It wasn't. It, I'm going to call it an oversight, but I think we should proceed with it.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Oh, it's on.
It's on us.
Yeah.
We had a situation, probably two injuries that I think I'm aware of that happened in between the town hall and the fire department that was there prior. Water coming off the roof and everything, ice. I think police officer, maybe the same one, I can't remember, two, two? Okay. One, I think, did he break his ankle?
I believe so.
Okay, so no matter how much salt we threw on it, you know, it, it would still refreeze at some point. You got dilution dissolution is what it is. And once you get so, so far that, you know, that salt content is diluted, it just refreezes. I think it would be a good idea for all these folks, you know, just kind of supporting this a little bit and throwing this out there. The two injuries probably could have been more with the amount of ice that was always back here at the, at the back. Just remember the two injuries that we did have, you know, and if we can avoid them, that twelve thousand could be, you know, money saved actually in interest, as far as that comes.
So this decision needs to be made by when?
Well, I, I prefer that, I mean, I guess I'm making a motion to approve the change order not to exceed twelve thousand if I can get them to hammer it down.
Might we have a little more leverage pointing out to them that, you know, this was sort of their oversight, and maybe the next meeting, we bring back what you've been able to?
No, yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to do that, but I'd like to have them proceed with the work.
The problem is, is there probably going to be more change orders. I mean, any construction, there's usually change orders all the time. And if we're already up to the, the contracts already at the three point one limit, is that what we're saying? I thought we could still bear it down.
Oh, yeah, it's a cost plus contract, so that, that's the max. We're hoping that we're going to come in below that on the base bid and the, and the authorized three hundred that we came in at for the estimate for the facade. So there's always the potential for it to come down. There is potential for it to go up. I mean, we still haven't gotten the costs in for the septic system yet, depending on what the state tells us. So there is some risk out there for additional change.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. The septic system will probably cost us several thousands of dollars, probably forty, fifty, sixty thousand, probably. I mean.
Just depends.
Hopefully not, but I'm.
Depends on what they.
Probably will.
Yeah, there's that potential. Hopefully, you know, depending on what they make us do.
But we really need to proceed with this construction now, otherwise it'll delay construction, is that right?
It wouldn't delay construction per se, but it wouldn't allow them.
It wouldn't allow them to hook into the underground.
Which means that they couldn't proceed with the rest of the concrete work to get the paving done. So it's one of these catch twenty-two sort of things.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like you authorize us to go for not to exceed on that amount, twelve thousand two hundred and twenty-one point eighty. And again, I'll try to negotiate that down with them.
You already have that motion, right?
I thought so.
It's motion.
Oh, what?
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to second?
That's my motion. Somebody needs to second it.
All right, I'll second it. Other discussion? Hall of favor, say aye?
Aye.
I don't think we got much of a choice.
I said aye.
Okay. Okay, public comments. First off, anybody in person have any comments? Anita.
So we did get approval, then?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, not to exceed.
I was a little confused at the end there.
Good evening. Anita Ramages, twenty-three hundred Floramont Siree. I might have forgotten that earlier. I want to congratulate you. Tonight was a great meeting. You agreed on three things. Tom Dolph deserved recognition, constant recognition for his thirty-one years or for him to still be here, but it was a wonderful meeting. It was four of you. Nobody was bullied, nobody was harassed, nobody was thrown chairs at, nothing happened. You discussed things and you moved forward. Thank you.
Any other comments from anybody here? Any comments on Zoom? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wait.
I have a comment, a council comment.
I'm sorry, I forgot council comments. My bad.
Okay. So I want people to know, I've been on here three and a half years, and the town attorney has always trained us not to respond to when people come up and criticize us. However, after October ninth, when our president used his position in council comments towards candidates running for office, I think I need to speak up. He left out some important facts. The person that he and John Wall wanted as clerk treasurer was not chosen by the Republican Party, but remained in the clerk's office to do accounting. They were both advised by the chief, myself, and a member of the budget committee that she did not have the necessary skills to perform the job. They totally ignored us. Now we have a total mess that we needed Cender and Company to come in and repair. The next thing is Johnstone, Coker, and McFadden were accused of holding on to the clerk treasurer. That's untrue. We may look powerful, but we have no right to remove an elected official from their position. Only the party that put him in there can do that, and it would have to be a felony or a serious violation. And last, I'm offended that you do not want future candidates to work together. Please quit trying to pit us against each other. We need to work together to lead this town.
Thanks, Mary Lou. Make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Hall of favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you need this back?